Specific department, that city has agreed to hold harmless all of the other members of the SWAT team. And so if it were one of our officers who committed an unlawful act, then the city would have some exposure, but the rest of the municipalities would not. As to item six, yeah, I would agree, it's, you could say that it's rather clumsily drawn. The import and the way it's been adopted and the way it's been practiced is that the purpose was to say that if one of the members drops off, the SWAT, the Metro SWAT continues. It doesn't dissolve the entire agency. Took a little while to get that one out.
But you did better than they did.
And here's, so when we look at these, it's like, you know, we would have written this one a little bit differently. We might want a little bit of clarification there. But when, the problem in that regard, we've got two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty. We've got 21 municipalities or townships. Our party's in this agreement already. And they, this is the agreement they've all signed. And if one of the municipalities at this point, if we were to say, hey, listen, we want you to tweak this, we want you to tweak that, make it a little more clear, now they gotta go back to the other 20 municipalities and run it all the way through and it's just, I don't know, not something we'd expect them to do. I think they'd be more inclined to say, go find another SWAT unit. So, but we're satisfied with the, that we're protected and covered in that regard.
Brian, do I leave anything else, Captain Carron?
No.
All right.
I did look, I didn't print it out, but the participation fees are, looks like we're pretty well, we're doing pretty well with the cities that are involved.
Right, it's based on population. Our annual fee will be $3,844.59. We're gonna be, the second half, we'll pay from half that amount, $1,936.42 for July through December of this year. And other departments in this unit, Aurora, Lawson Heights, oh gosh, Bernie, I wanna make you write all these down, but just so the public knows.
Brimfield Township, Hotley, Fairlon, Hudson, Kent, Kent State, Macedonia, Monroe Falls, Prevenon, Northfield, Ridgefield, Peninsula, Silver Lake, Sagamore Hills, Springfield Township, Stowe, Streetsboro, Twinsburg. It remains to be seen what our neighbors in Norton are gonna do because they're in the same situation as we are now. So, but it's, it's a pretty good, well-represented group.
Any other questions, Paul? Okey-dokey, we'll have to ask for time on this and we'll close the safety committee with one member.
I'd like Paul to order the City of New Franklin regular meeting of the council at 6:16. One day, 18, 16, period of pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tell me, do you have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amendments for the regular scheduled meeting on May 4th.
Say it.
We have a first and a second. Would you do a roll call, Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion finished, four, zero. I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for April of 2022, subject to audit.
Salute. Just a second, sorry.
Kelly, do you have a roll call?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. We have public comments now. Does anyone have any comments on what's about to come up? Nothing. Then we'll begin with our first reading, which is resolution number 22R31. Mr. Cox?
Mrs. Kepler.
A resolution to establish the hourly rate for extra duty jobs performed by New Franklin police officers and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Daniels?
Oh, I'm sorry, this, this resolution was brought to the finance committee and we're asking for time.
Time finance force, the time will be granted. Resolution number 22R32.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee and we also ask for time on this.
Time finance force, the time will be granted. And resolution number 22R29.
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a membership and participation agreement with Metro SWAT and declaring an emergency.
This is assigned to safety committee and we also ask for time?
Time is asked for, so time will be granted. We have number three or four previous for our favorite time of the evening. Our mayor?
This is a little early in the job, right?
So did I care when putting so quickly?
I'm ready to go.
All right.
A couple of different matters. The, the, two things, the first two things are gonna be matters that I'm gonna suggest the council refers to the laws and ordinances committee. And first is a review of the council rules. They were adopted quite a number of years ago, let me see, 2008. And a general review wouldn't hurt. There's been specific questions about the appropriate or the sufficient notice of meetings and not just our regular meetings, but committee meetings, et cetera. So, we talked with legal counsel, we talked to our law director about that, he's got some suggested language to add relative to that. And then he also took a look at the rest of it and there's a, there's a phrase here, a phrase there that probably could use review. The, the current council rules provide for amendments to the rules by a simple majority of council. It doesn't require a resolution, they're officially in ordinance to adopt them. But that is on the report of the laws and ordinances committee, to which the subject is referred at a previous meeting, and that's council rule 4.9. So if council chooses to refer this to laws and ordinances, I'd be happy to pass along this, you know, at least the things that they, that law directors looked at and you guys take a full look at it and, and so, and whether you're ready by the next meeting or not, but somewhere down the road. In the interim, I think consistent with, I mean arguably what we have in the rules are sufficient as it relates to meeting, to give notice. But I think to be, you know, abundantly cautious that going forward, if council committees advise us, administration or actually, Mrs. Kepler, of a date, time and place and purpose of a committee meeting, we'll go ahead and put that, make sure that's on the Facebook page and the website at least 24 hours prior. And so that would apply even to that, the very next meeting of laws and ordinances as we review these things.
So are you suggesting the council needs to ask the laws and ordinances committee officially to do this work?
Yeah, that she would basically have to refer that matter to laws and ordinances and perhaps council president would refer it to laws and ordinances to review the council rules.
May I do it just with the motion, did you say?
Sure.
And I'd like to make the motion to refer this item to laws and ordinances for review.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Sure.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Good.
Mr. Daniels?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Paul, I think this is a good idea.
Blackest people makes this work.
That's okay. That's a good thing. The second thing for laws and ordinances, well, it certainly, full council, but it may end up with laws and ordinances and as you folks are aware, and I mean this is a very serious matter, that we've received a request from an individual, I think at this point, I'm not gonna get into specific, certainly not it, I'll try to stay with general information. A person that's concerned about city laws, if any, relative to residency of registered sex offenders. There are provisions in the Ohio Revised Code that restrict residency for individuals who are still required to register as sex offenders. There, generally, it has to do with a certain distance, most of them is distance from a school and those types of things. A number of cities, including neighboring cities, have expanded those to include, well, let me put it this way, city parks are not included in the Ohio Revised Code, but a number of cities have added that as well, as an additional place that a registered sex offender would not be permitted to reside. And so we had, as councils are aware, we had an inquiry from an individual who lives by one of the parks and had reason to believe that perhaps there were some registered sex offenders who were living in that proximity. No suggestion that anything untoward had happened or that anybody was at risk particularly or at danger, so I wanna make that clear. But just wondered if there was something that, whether New Franklin had any ordinance in that regard, which we do not, we follow the state ordinance, and whether or not New Franklin might want to expand the prohibitions in the Revised Code. So that does not take any kind of formal motion, but I think that's something just like Airbnb, et cetera, if council decides that you should take over that, let us know. You know, I've reached out to our law director, he's provided me with a couple of samples from a couple of other cities, which I have to pass on, so I'll leave it up to council if they feel like they want to apply to that.
I would be happy to do some research, if you wouldn't mind sharing with me what you have as far as what the ORC is, as well as some humanity information on neighboring communities and what they have. I think especially with something like that, you wanna be as consistent with others in the area as possible, make it less confusing. I'll do that, we'll get that to you.
So we're saying Jack is volunteering to research?
Yeah, on the laws and ordinance.
He's on the ordinance.
Well, I was seizing because he said we're gonna need assignments to be, I think.
Oh, yeah, 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 we would, tell these guys.
All right. Well, the rest I have is more pleasant news. First is, yeah, exactly. We, Chief Pickett received an email from Officer Seth Gade, G-A-E-D-E, from the Monville Township Police Department in Medina. And I was reading, "I work for Monville Police Department, I wanna pass on my thanks and compliments regarding your dispatchers and officers. I invested a hit skip in the area on May 14th. The possible suspect vehicle had a New Franklin address. Long story short, I called your dispatch center, and that would be the South Summit Dispatch Center and considered as part of our cog with Green. Called them on May 14th and on May 16th requesting an officer to drive by, see if they can make contact. Vehicle and owner ended up not being called in the incident. However, I was very impressed by how helpful and friendly your dispatchers were each time I called. Wish I could remember names, but unfortunately I didn't catch them. It also seems like your officers got on this quickly each time and everyone made sure to contact me back and let me know what was found. I hardly ever get this type of service when I call other agencies for assistance, but your dispatchers were extremely professional with me, even such a minor incident I was handling. I felt the need to at least pass this on, this great experience I had with the dispatchers and how speedily your officers responded and helped his investigation close up a lot faster." So, through those two, the police, and that's been passed on and we pass that on to the dispatch center as well, and they share that with their dispatchers. Okay, let me see, three last things. Memorial Day weekend coming up, we've got a lot of fun coming. Sunday, the 29th, that's the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, it's sailed into summer. We'll be over at the Tinker House, where you see it. We have close to 30 vendors lined up, there's food trucks, there's beverage trucks, beer, wine, soft drinks, and the vendors, and it was such a great, great time to stroll the grounds last year, and so I hope that people can take advantage of that again. That's from noon to five on the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, and then that's followed by Memorial Day Parade steps off at 10 o'clock over at Grace, and we'll conclude with the ceremony at the cemetery honoring all who have lost their lives, all who have served the country, and specifically Lieutenant Edward Fashna, who you folks helped memorialize at our last meeting. The Conference Plant Project is moving down the tracks, a vision event was held at Gather, and I think it was very, very productive, and it was good, good representation and leadership by the steering committee that was put in place. There will be workshops to follow, the community survey will also follow, and that's a real big piece. So we wanna give, I wanna thank the steering committee in general, and also specifically council representative Jack Daniels, who's been very active in this already, and special thanks to Mark Settle for stepping up and chairing the survey committee. With a lot of dedication, a lot of enthusiasm to this project, which is what we need, so off to a good start. Lastly, Saturday, July 23rd, the Drag-A-Lo Race is returning, and this is what a great event, it celebrates breast cancer survivors, the international team is, this is their home court, but Northern America was here last fall and celebrated them, and they're really, really excited, couldn't do it the last two years, I don't think, so, they're really excited. New Franklin has entered a team each year, the last time we had was 2019, out of 16 community teams, we finished third, and so we're going back to do even better this time around. The entry fee is $1,000. We checked previously with ethics and the city cannot, can't bear that expense, and so we have, we rely on donations. I sent something out that the department has already, I won't name any specific names, some are in the room, but we already have cash in hand or commitments to about the tune of about $400 to that $1,000. So we'll continue to ask you to rate, you know, to, if you feel inspired to donate to that cost, please do, and all the money, of course, will go there, and it's a pretty great day down there at the beach. I mean, it's a carnival and a lot of fun and just a lot of good spirit, so we're looking forward to that as well, and that's all.
Thank you, Paul. Simpson?
Don't have a lot to talk about, we're still working on our finishing of our GAAP, which is our financial report for 2021, and then we go straight into the audit, we're also having DWC audits, so it's just audits all around. So we're just busy with those kinds of things in our regular stuff. I do have the unexceeded balance for the end of April, and that is $7,216,075.14. Is that done?
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Does anyone have any old business?
I just wanna see if we could get an update on Valley Press, has anything happened there?
And I did not check with council, I know we, they're determined a date to go out there and do another cleanup. Hasn't happened yet, because it's impossible to drive by there without looking, but I expect that will happen certainly within the next two weeks, so.
That's just, it's just a planning?
Right, exactly, gotta coordinate with, with the company that's gonna come. And then it's a little tricky, then we're, what goes and what doesn't go? What's in violation of zoning and what is just an eyesore, but not in violation of zoning? And actually, we, we don't wanna really take advantage of anybody or usurp or offend anybody's rights, and we don't wanna take the wrong side. So there, there at that phase of it, I know, is, what can we say? It's so unfortunate that we're gonna, I'll keep you posted.
I've heard a rumor that we have a piece of property that some people refer to as Bolus Park.
Yeah, right. I'm hoping to get that done as part of the Memorial Day, and I, again, I forgot to check to see, it's just a matter of finishing the stump, which we were told was, would be ready by then, but I haven't got the final word on that yet. So if, in fact, it is, my, one thought I had was to try to do that on the, on that Sunday event, maybe gather there about 11:30 or so, or that could be the kickoff to the event or whatever, and honoring them, so I'll check on that one, too.
That would be a good one.
Yeah, that would be, I will prepare. And also, I know we did some outsourcing, but Bolus Park is looking a little ragged with the grass cutting or lack of, or less often than what we're used to, and I believe some other properties are feeling the same about.
I had that same, I had that conversation with Brian today, and we're doing outreach there, because that can't be.
Right.
So we have to do that.
It has been very wet.
Well, there's that.
And the number of days that you can mow, you know, and I, I'm not making an excuse for not involved.
I think that's been part of the problem.
Sure, sure. Let's go.
Let's, let's hang that.
We're paying, we're paying for, sorry. Yeah, I know.
Kelly, option?
Yes, Evan.
Do we have any new business?
I do, I'd like to talk a little bit about the steering committee. It's an honor beyond that, there's been a lot of good activity, a lot of very deeply engaged people. It was a bit of a, I don't wanna say a disappointment, but it was a little bit sad that we only had 14 members of the community show up last night. I thought there was more than that, when I looked at the room, it felt like more, but then when you realize how many people that were there were us and people directly related to the city, you know, city staff was there, the department head was there, but yeah, to only get 14 members out of 14, 15,000 people was, was a little bit, a little on the low There's been a little bit of conversation with regard to mailing the survey, so I've talked to a few more than just, just you, Mark, and there is some, some desire to find out if council has an appetite to pay to mail the survey to residents. That's what we did before. Everybody says, wow, you got, you got good results the last time. We've got a lot of money invested in this, were we budgeted $100,000?
Our original thought was that it'd be about $100,000.
Okay, okay. And the Pogomire part is 65 to 70, somewhere around there, just using random numbers?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm getting the feeling, as this is going on, that, that we might be selling ourselves short if we don't make that investment to mail something. One idea came up to mail a postcard out, it's a postcard reminder that says, come and get your survey at town hall, at the library, at the fire station, at any place that you could come and get it. Follow this barcode or QR code and you can fill out online, a phone number that people could call to say, hey, I'm unable to go out, could you bring me a survey? We have people that would volunteer to actually hand deliver surveys. But I still think, so I guess that's kind of the question, is, does, does council have an appetite to get some pricing, figure out how much it's gonna cost, I suppose? It's probably gonna be $10,000 to $20,000 now. Yeah, probably closer to 20,000 if we actually mailed the survey itself to every resident, every residents, and probably closer to 10,000 if it's a postcard. Those are total guesses. I don't have, I'm not a mail scientist.
Do you remember what the cost was to send those postcards? Was it about $6,000?
Oh, we sent postcards, three cards?
It's been so long ago, I really don't remember. Oh, recently?
It wasn't any more than that, I can't.
I thought it was only like $6,000, around that.
Yeah, I think it was in that.
I mean, I would say, I, my personal perspective always has been that we should mail it, so that's, that's, I mean, that's, you know, I think that, the only question I would have then is, do you supplement, what do you do besides that? And that's not my call to make, but I mean, you know, it's, it's certainly something that we anticipated in terms of potential cost, that, you know, partly because we did get a good return the last time with it, and I'm, I'm going to, I expect that we have return envelopes in there for that, and, which I think makes a lot of sense, if you're gonna spend, go to the expense of printing the thing up and mailing it out, you ought to go to the expense of having a return mailer, so all I gotta do is fill it in and stick it in there and send it back.
Makes sense.
That makes sense.
We can get, I think, Katie and me have already gotten some pricing on that, but I'll, I'll follow up with you this week and let you know, and we'll get you some pricing on that.
It'll probably depend on the size of the survey.
Right, yeah.
The 400-page book might be more expensive than that.
And it can.
Well, okay, so I'll talk about that, I know you're looking at different ones, I know that was part of the consideration last time around, you wanna get as much information as you can, you don't wanna make it so long that nobody's gonna fill it out. You gotta hit that balance in there, and I'm sure you're looking at that.
I can speak to that, something that came up in our committee that we think is a, we all think is a good idea, is that we do the survey as like a two or even three-part, that you start here, when you get to this point, if you think you've spent enough time, okay, you give us some of your opinion, if you wanna go for a deeper dive and give us more of your opinion, keep going.
Or here, or here's a, here's a link that you can go to the website and do the rest of, if you happen to be doing it paperwork, or whatever. That way we're limiting the amount of paper that we're sending, we're also limiting that thing where people look at it and go, ooh, that's too much, and they stick it aside, but we can get the quick view from some, get a deeper dive from some, and maybe even a third part where somebody wants to do a real interview.
And you guys saw the previous one, you folks have seen the previous one, I think there was some, maybe that was addressed in the sense of, there was a place for them to write if they wanted to, further explain their answer, that they could answer with the maybe have notice and so on, so, but yeah, we'll, I'll check the pricing on that and report you.
So from council's perspective, I don't hear anybody saying that's crazy.
No.
That's important to hear.
We already kind of agree with Paul, I think that probably we do need to mail it because some people won't take the time to just send a card.
I, you know, this is a big investment, this community is at a turning point, there's no doubt about it, and there is, there's a real distinct difference in this town between this side of town and that side of town, and it's always been that way. And I think that's something that we've got the committee together that's willing to face that. We know more now than we did 18 years ago, you know, we're a formal, formal city now, we weren't then. I, I think this is an opportunity, and I think we need to seize, seize the opportunity that we're in. So that, that's my thought, I just wanted to throw it out there for discussion and get some numbers, see where we're at, and I think that's all I have.
I agree, Jack, I think that's a good idea, because I do think that we are really, we want to be involved in the community, and we want the community to be involved.
And as we saw last night, you really have to reach out in full.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, that's the truth, that's the way it goes. Everybody, everybody has a life, you know, they've got, they've got everything going on and, you know, the, the delivery was a little bit confusing, there were, I talked to some people who were a little confused as to what, what was expected at the event, were they gonna just walk through, come in, say what they thought, and move on? In reality, it was about a two-hour commitment, which is a lot to ask somebody to do when they have a normal life to live, and, you know, our, our job is to hopefully do our job well enough, they don't have to worry about the city government, but, you know, this is a case that we're asking, we really want, we want their input, so, yeah, that's something else that people probably wanna talk about later, is, is how some of the, how that event in the first meeting, some things that some of us are starting to get a little concerned, but we're gonna give that some time.
I had a couple of comments about it, as part of the other thing, if we're talking about money and budget, one of the things that we kicked around and talking to other people on the steering committee about, seems to have a lot of traction, is that if we really wanna get participation, we're gonna need to advertise, we're gonna have some community outreach, whether it's, you know, we take, kick out and find some political-style signs, little yard signs that are, you know, that's a lot of bang for the buck, put them at strategic intersections. An inexpensive thing to do is, is to put up flyers, local businesses, talk to them about getting something that's simple, not a real worthy thing, but some real quick bullet points that, you know, make your voice heard, do the survey, vote. And we, I asked the head of the committee, the chair of the committee, to reach out, find somebody to chair a communications subcommittee, somebody who would take that on, and one of the members is a young guy, I think is gonna be the one who's gonna go that route, and we had a bunch of people talking about volunteering that were citizens, et cetera, he'd like to get involved, so that's something we might have to address, too.
So to that topic, another thing that got talked about that I forgot about until you mentioned that, is the, having a formal spot on the agenda of these meetings where somebody comes and gives a report of the activity of the committee, whether it be the chairman or if they have a, you know.
That's good, I, it's better for the committee than for the mayor. I'm doing it just because I wanna, you know, I want people to know what's up, but I think that's a good idea.
I should ask the chair to come and give a report.
And, and I know we can hear you, for everybody at home to hear, it's a lot nicer. It either come up here or if we had a handheld microphone or something like that.
Right, that's a good idea.
People heard a report from, from a member of the committee.
Right, exactly right.
And I, I don't, I wouldn't wanna be it either, I mean, I'm, I'm on the committee, but I'm in government, it's nice, it's nice that this is a citizen's house.
We need to enlighten the chairman to kind of.
Right, right. Yeah, and he's a good speaker.
Yes. Yes.
And we need a Jared Springer to run around.
Yeah. Phil Dunn, Phil Dunn.
I'm not that old.
There are no, I don't, um, I'm wondering, is that something you'd like us to try to, to have Michael here at the next meeting? Or should we have to do that after the next event from, um, or leave it up to Mike?
Let us talk about, I guess I wanted to bring it up at this meeting to make sure everybody was okay with it being an agenda item, and then we have to communicate.
I think it'd be great. And in fact, just to set it up and go ahead and do it even next meeting if you see.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing I could think of is if, there's, there's gonna be a period of time that nothing happens.
Put a spot if you've got something to report. You can, if not, you're not gonna be able to. But, but you can still talk about what's coming up.
Right.
Yeah, true, true.
And a lot of people have been, it's theater, it's happening, it's guitar city. I do think it's a wonderful idea.
Good brainstorm. I agree, so, yeah, just go ahead and put it on the agenda.
If that's okay for you, Mr. Carter. Thank you.
You have enough ink?
So you want it like as a line item, correct?
Yeah, that, that way when the agenda gets published, you know, if the agenda goes out and ends up on Facebook, people will see that there's gonna be.
So.
Maybe right up to the mayor's report.
Okay.
I agree.
That one's great. And this would just be a steering.
And on our board, comprehensive plan committee report. Comprehensive plan committee report.
Committee report. All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Do we have any public questions on any of the information that's been discussed tonight? Robert just let me know that they will down, they'll upload the first five minutes later tonight. Robert, thank you for fixing that. We appreciate it.
For sure.
That was sweet. And I don't think we have a need for an executive session.
We do not.
So I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Okay.
Oh, my God.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Absolutely.
We are adjourned in our next council meeting, which we would expect you all to be here. And we are gonna check to adjourn, cousin. Will be June first, two thousand twenty-two.